To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sal, I knew before we begin, I just want to let folks in the audience know when we get to the policy subcommittee, we have not met yet, so we will not be voting on any policies tonight. Just so if some people were planning to stay for that, you know, you're more than welcome, but we're just not going to be voting on that. So I just wanted to give people a heads up.
All right, go ahead. So at this time, we'll open up for public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to come up and speak? State your name and-
Sure. My name is Bob Greska, Crestfield Lane, Leominster. I'm actually here because of the policy you look like you're not going to be voting on, as you probably are pretty aware of for the most part. Again, I just really want to encourage you, full support of the full policy for the JJIV and scholarships policy change that allows both the athlete and the coach as well to forfeit a game without consequences. Last month, you did have the athletic director, Mr. Plazi, come and explain basically that the coaches are already doing this, that they're obviously watching over the safety of the athletes, and they will forfeit a game if they feel it's unsafe. I don't understand why we wouldn't put that into the policy, especially if we have new coaches that come on board at some point. So I just really want to encourage that. You did have two female athletes speak last month, really didn't seem to care much about that change. They thought it was perfectly fine without it. I think part of that is over the past 15 years, we've really kind of taught our kids that it doesn't matter, and you should expect this, and it should be boys and girls on a girls' team. I think that's wrong. It's not bigoted to say that, I do not believe. And I think we all know that there are physical differences between men and women, boys and girls. Certainly at teenage years, guys are stronger and faster, and that can obviously become a problem. So again, as a school committee, really, I believe your job is really to protect the kids as well, is certainly part of it. I'm just encourage you really to do your job, take the accountability on yourselves instead of putting it on the kids to make that decision, make the decision for them. They need the protection. That's why we're the adults in the room. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, good evening. My name is Patrick. I'm somewhat of a regular face now. I live over on Central Street, Leominster. Again, I'm also here concerning the athletic policy that's being, we'll be discussing, voted on. You know, I wanted to share, instead of it being a safety aspect that Bob mentioned, I wanted to give you a little bit of a case study of fairness, a real-life case study. 2016, the Australian National Women's Soccer Team, Australian Matildas, you may or may not have heard of this particular study case, case really, 18 to low 30s of the age, best of the nation. They ended up playing against a male team, a practice team, and they lost. But it wasn't the male national soccer team, it was a U-15 boys soccer team. And it wasn't even close. It was seven to zero. They didn't even score a goal. So I wanted to highlight that because, you know, those women put their everything into this. So this is not to say that anything against the women's national soccer team. These boys are under 15, and it was actually, reporters were there, people saw this practice team. And it was, it was a clear illustration of the genetic superiority of men versus women. It's, and that's just, I don't think anyone got hurt either at this particular case. But it's there, you can take a look yourselves, 2016. And so you can, you can make a lot of extrapolations of that, but I think it just really enshrines and highlights the differences. And if we're talking about a fairness thing, I, you know, that's, that is a very clear, studyable case that happened in real world. Safety is self-evident. Medical journals, you, I don't think anyone's really debating if men and women are different in terms of speed and strength. But I wanted to highlight that as a real case study. I've, again, I've collected, you know, data from the constituents at my local business for people who are for or against the policy. So I just wanted to tell you about that as well, my two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the committee? Once again? One last time? Okay, anybody, I know some people that asked for the, what the site was, Chris. So I gave him this email, but I don't know. Yeah. So, I don't know, is there somebody that wants to speak remotely? Do you have anybody signed up? Okay, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Now move on to communications.
No communications this evening.
Move on to student report.
So for the LHS student report, we want to start with the theater company who participated in their festival competition on Saturday, and will be moving on to semis and hopefully finals. The following students won awards, so Gianna Doherty and Nathan Daniels won excellence in acting, Lila Verigari, Carla Pielke Fernandez, Mia Senneville, I'm so sorry, I'm like saying all these wrong, Rena Baubey, Reyna Foye Boder, all won awards for excellence in technical execution, Amli Lupin won award for technical excellence in animation artwork, and Mia Senneville won an award for technical excellence in set design. So the theater company will be holding their public performances of the competition play, The Miraculous Journey of Edward Tulane, on Tuesday and Thursday at 7:00 PM. It's a very charming story, and I highly recommend everyone goes to watch it. Show Choir will also be having their last show on March 8th, and we encourage you to attend. For seniors, there's still about 36 or so people who haven't gone in their caps and gowns, so do that. The late fees are already applying. On March 14th, we're going to be having our blood drive. Also preorder your yearbooks by March 28th, and the prices are around $85. Environmental Club is going to be collecting cans to grow marigolds in. Also, on March 21st, please wear your mismatched socks or purchase some lunches, or purchase some socks at lunches for Down Syndrome Awareness Month. There will also be a college and career fair on March 8th at the Chemsford Center of Arts. It's a great opportunity for juniors and seniors who are trying to get ahead. Junior prom tickets are also on sale. The junior prom will be on April 5th, and prom tickets will go on sale very soon. The Ski and Snowboard Club has a trip to Stratton Mountain coming up to March 15th. The LHS dance team is holding their final performance of the year Wednesday, March 5th at 6:00 PM. So there's lots of performances. Go find something you're interested in, support our arts. The LHS course has an amazing performance at the UMass Lowell Choral Invitation last week. And the cheer team finished their season with amazing performance at state finals this past weekend. The wrestling team, boys and girls basketball, and girls hockey, all qualified for state tournaments this year as well. So yeah.
And I have no updates at this time.
All righty.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you. It continues to be busy for Leominster Public Schools. There is a few important updates. We are midway through the third quarter. The middle school and high school progress reports will be coming out on March 4th. So please review these reports with your student, take a few minutes to celebrate their successes, and if you have any questions, please feel free to contact the school. We continue to move forward with the Fallbrook Elementary Building Project. We've had two public forums, and we have a third public forum coming up on March 18th at 6:00 PM. That's a Tuesday evening, and these forums provide opportunities for the public to hear where we are with the project and ask questions. So we encourage people to come out if you haven't. This particular forum may be a hybrid forum with in-person and online, so watch for more information on that. Leominster High School Marching Band will be holding an information session tomorrow for interested students and parents, and then also on the 12th, so March 4th or the 12th, if you're interested, in the band room at 5:30 PM. As Ren shared, the Flamingo Show Choir event will be held this Saturday, March 8th, at the Leominster High School Auditorium. It's an all-day event. It's, it will be pretty exciting. There's going to be groups from all around New England performing. You can purchase tickets at the door or online. If you go to our Facebook page for Leominster Public Schools, my Sunday newsletter has a QR code that you can scan to purchase the tickets. Our English Language PAC will be holding a family night at Skyview Middle School on Thursday, March 13th at 6:00 PM. Our CPAC will be holding its annual Community Resource Fair on Saturday, March 22nd, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at Leominster High School. And finally, MCAS testing begins this month. Just as another reminder, it is no longer a requirement to obtain a high school diploma, but it is still a requirement of both the state and the federal government for us to assess our students annually. And so grades three to 10 will still be assessed, and it's really important that students come prepared, well-rested, to do their very best on these exams. We use the information to know how to better service our students and how to provide stronger interventions. So we just remind families of that. And then also, we launched an Instagram page for our district this weekend. It is Leominster Public Schools, no spaces, all one word. And if you are interested, please follow us. That is it.
Any questions to the superintendent? Not. Move on to item 2A, Mr. Roddequins' request.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good.
Hello.
Is this, hello Melissa. Oh, you, it actually, it's very difficult with my minor hearing loss, and you can't hear in the back of the room, but thank you very much for giving me the opportunity. Ron, how are you?
Good.
Mayor Mazzarella, Superintendent Desmond, ladies and gentlemen, I am here to make a request of you. I represent my brother Jack and myself. He's here for moral support, and I'm the oldest, so I, I'm here. He deferred to me. But first, some pertinent remarks, I think, will-
Wait a minute, every time I talk to him, he doesn't defer to you. He says he's the-
But that's in private.
He says he's in control.
No, this is face-to-face, Dean.
He's given that up.
We're all set. Hello, Sandra. It's been a long time. Yeah. My little speech that I've rehearsed now for 14 years, Monza Song. For those of us of a certain age, we remember Tom Brokaw. Tom was a respected journalist. He presided over the Evening News, from 6:00 and 11:00 o'clock, to one of the three channels we had access to at that time. And in his spare time, he wrote books. And one of those books was called The Greatest Generation. And he documented the lives of 12 people who were born in the beginning of the 20th century, grew up in the Depression, fought World War II to save the world from the fascists, and came home, raised their families, built the strongest middle class the world has ever seen, and the greatest economy that yet functions. And my parents, our parents, excuse me, were two members of that generation. And the Depression was extremely difficult here in Leominster. My father was fortunate enough that he graduated from high school. After football and baseball practice, he would walk home to Lancaster Street, grab supper. He would go back uptown, and he would be an usher at the old Metropolitan Theater, and do his homework up in back under the small lights. My mother didn't have that opportunity. At the end of her junior year, she needed to leave school and go to work to help support the family, which were her mother and father, six brothers and sisters, two aunts, and a nephew, all living in five and a half rooms on Grand Street with one bathroom. You can imagine the confusion there. And when they married and had us, they made sure that Jack and I had the, the option to go to college and to do the things that they were not able to accomplish through no fault of their own. And often with conversations over a number of years, my mother would always say how much she regretted the fact that she wasn't able to graduate from high school, which leads me to the request. I am requesting that you grant her an honorary diploma from Leominster High School, I should say, we are requesting, made out to Margaret Louise Campbell Roddequins, Leominster High School, class of 1938. My mother is still alive. On the 27th of May of this year, she will be 105 years old. She resides in JML Care Center in Falmouth, and she has outlived her family, her friends. She's outlived her mobility. She's wheelchair-bound now. What she hasn't done is shown any signs of dementia or Alzheimer's, and so her cognitive ability is still there. I should also say that she has outlived her hearing. Conversations with her are a little bit tedious because we have to write things on a whiteboard, and we communicate that way. So that is my request of you. I thank you very much for allowing us the time to present this to you. I don't know if you have any other questions of me or my brother, but if not, I will await your response, and I thank you very much for the opportunity. Yes, Aline?
So if we were to grant this, which I think would be a wonderful thing to do, would you want that diploma as soon as possible, or during the graduation ceremony, and wait until then?
Her, she's doing quite well at the moment, but at her age, of course-
Never.
We don't know. It could be at the flip of a switch. I would think, I think if Jack and I had the option to have it available for her on her birthday, it gets close to graduation at the end of May, that's fine with me. If you can't do it until graduation, then by all means, we'll, we'll wait for that.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I wanted to give you that option.
It's been a long time since I've seen you. Where you been? Well, I always wonder where people go.
Where they go? Well, when Rosemary and I retired, we moved to a house on the Cape.
Oh, yeah.
And we lived in Mashpee for, oh, I think now it's, it was about 18 years. We, we were there. And then lo and behold, our younger son, all of a sudden, there's a grandchild on board. We have two at this point. I mean, we were in our 70s at that point, deciding, figuring we'd never have grandkids, sort of gave up that hope. But Olivia is seven, and Davy is four. And so what we did is we moved closer to Bolton, where they live-
Oh, wow.
Into an over 55 condo development, and it's great, you know. Those of you that have grandchildren, you know. I'm sorry, Melissa. You can't afford me. And with that, because I was here during vacation time and spoke with the superintendent, she made me an offer I almost couldn't refuse, but I denied it anyway.
Well, good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Looking well.
Nice to see all of you, actually. Thank you very much.
No, thank you for coming and bringing this forward.
Have a nice evening.
Jack, good to see you. Yeah, I know, I know. I know where to find you.
Do you want to take a motion?
Yeah, we'll take a, we'll just move this up on the agenda. We can vote on this now.
Yeah.
Anybody have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Second by-
To grant it, obviously.
To grant, yeah. We're not going to hold this up. So Sandra is the second, all in favor, signify the usual man of those opposed. See you in May. Wherever she is in May, I'll come bring it. How's that? All right, that is good. Leominster Center for Excellence, Leominster Academy, and the Leominster High School presentations, in whichever order you'd like. You can flip a coin, you can arm wrestle, you can-
Okay. This arrow would advance it.
Stephanie's, do you want her to go first? There it is. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
That's going to be a tough act to follow there, but I'll try. So I'm John Vancilet. I'm the principal of the Leominster Center for Excellence. I'm happy to say that we are, we've always been our own school, but now we actually have our own building, and I thank everybody that helped to make that happen. We're now located at 236 Lancaster Street. So if you haven't come down to see us, feel free. Inside of our school, we actually have two programs. The first program is known as the Innovation in Career Academy. I think of that as LCE Classic. So those of you that are familiar with LCE will remember the way that we do school there, and it will all sound quite familiar. The new program is the Empower Ed Program. That is a credit recovery program for older students that are having a hard time making it to graduation. So at first, I'd like to talk a bit about the Innovation in Career Academy, LCE Classic. This is our mission. I apologize, this is a very text-heavy presentation. It's not like a TED Talk, but I'll do my best to not read every single word and move this along. And if you have any questions, feel free to, to ask. I will read this part, though. I think it's important. The mission of ICA is to provide a safe and supportive environment where students drive their learning through real-world learning opportunities in interest-based activities while increasing foundational academic skills and knowledge. ICA fosters a culture of curiosity and exploration, guiding students to discover their interests and develop skills that prepare them for diverse future pathways. So that's a lot to unpack, and I'm, hopefully, this presentation and your questions will elucidate that a bit more. I won't read this whole blog post here, but I will tell you that the picture is a demonstration of what that says. We do our best to meet our students where they are at, find out what they're interested in, what drives them, and use that interest and their intrinsic motivation to help them to develop projects and other academic learning experiences that integrate all of the different subject areas. In this case, the student is very, very interested in videography. The student did a series of interviews with, first with other students, and that's what you're seeing right there, then staff, and now they're bringing in students from outside. So he, he'll have people from his classroom, contact potential mentors and other people that are in careers that they're interested in, and they'll come to the classroom, or he'll go on their location, set up, and, and record their, their conversations, their interviews. Oh, and he's interning at the, at LTV right now. Speaking of internships, that's a huge part of our program at ICA, and actually, we're starting to dip into that a bit more with Empower Ed, as you'll see. Here's just a list of some of the past internship sites that we've had, and some we currently do. In order to track these internship sites and to add new ones, and do a whole lot more things, we have this, this app that we have on our kids' Chromebooks, but also on their phones, where it's called EmBlaze, and they can find past internship sites to explore those. They can locate new potential sites. They can check into their internships and check out. That way, we know what time to get there, what time they leave. It's all GPS monitored and so on. And they can also do assignments within, within that, that app. It's a really useful tool. It's called EmBlaze, if you're interested. One of the things I always mention, because often it's asked, is that our students over at Leominster Center for Excellence, including ICA students, are able to access all of the different sports and clubs and activity, extracurricular activities at Leominster High School. We have a lot of, a few students in band right now and other activities, and we will drive them over there to get to those activities in time. These are just a few pictures of some internship sites. We have a student at the dog grooming. We have another student working at a mechanics. There's a student who's, I forget the name of that store. It's a really cool, yes, Forest Wonders. It's great. I love that place. And then the alpaca farm in Harvard. A lot of animals in this picture. We- Yeah. The bird is very loud. He doesn't stop talking. We do a lot of community outreach. I started to put like pictures in there of different things we do, and it just would have been like a 700-slide presentation. So I decided to just pick one. Something that our students and a few staff participated in was the Inspire Leadership Conference at Worcester State University this year. It's a, it was a really good experience, and the students got a lot out of it, and we're excited to have had that opportunity. So that's ICA in a nutshell. I'll move on to Empower Ed. As I mentioned, Empower Ed is a newer program. It was started last year under me. In LCE, it is a credit recovery student, program for students that have either fallen behind in credits and are trying to catch up again so that they can rejoin their class at LHS or CTEI, or students that are just needing alternative pathways, or pathway, are credit short, and need some extra support in order to make up those credits to graduate on time. Our mission is to empower students to renew their academic journey. Many of our students, you know, have, have like given up at this point, and this is kind of a last resort. So we hope to like reignite that passion in them for reaching the goal of earning a high school diploma, reconstruct their educational path, and reimagine their potential for success. We design innovative educational paths for all of our students using a combination of online coursework, in-person classes, work-study, and now internships. Teachers and students, sorry, teachers and support staff collaborate with the students and families to ensure the students are challenged and supported as they work toward their goals. Here are some statistics from last year and this year. You can see last year, we had 45 students enrolled in the program by the end of the year. Average credits they had upon entering the program was 140. In order to graduate, last, graduate last year, they needed 230. We had 15 juniors, 30 seniors, 26 of them graduated. Each, the average amount of credits earned per student was 58. We have 10 students still enrolled. We have five students that transferred, five transfer students transferred. I should have edited that, but you get the- Five transfer students transferred. I should have edited that, but you get the gist. And then four students withdrew. So I think that's a decent start. I would, I would like the numbers to be even better this year.
The four students that withdrew, sorry, did they get their GED or something afterwards instead of just going through?
One of them wants to come back. Two of them have jobs in our home with children, and one of them is working in the Cape, a construction job. So no GED, at least yet. Still trying to keep track of those students and, you know, follow up with them. Alright, yeah.
Honestly, today, people are going to live till 90 or 100, and they just are. And so if they don't get their GE at money, and there are other things that happen, they'll get them later.
Yeah, I, I have, I have confidence in those students, too, that they will do that eventually. Now we have 35 students. I actually had two come in today, so we might be at 37 by Wednesday or Thursday. So I'm sure it'll pick up even more. This is the time of year we start getting more and more kids. Right now, the average credit is 148, so right around where we were last year. The age, the average age is 17 and a half years. We have eight juniors and 27 seniors. Semester one, how'd they do? Average of 30 credits earned per student, so that kind of tracks with where we were last year. 72 courses have been completed overall. And semester two outcomes right now, 17 courses completed so far, which is a lot really early in the semester. And we have five new students and new referrals coming in, like I said. I will not read these. These are our goals. You can read them at your leisure. Goal one is about attendance. I'm sorry, goal one is about graduation. Goal two is attendance. Attendance is a, is a real struggle. And historically, with many of these students, this is the reason they are where they are. So we work really hard to help them with that. The third goal is about family and community engagement, and the fourth one is about our, our climate and culture in the school. Trying, getting kids more involved and taking leadership roles within the school environment. And as you can read, we've made pretty good progress on all those goals so far, but still a lot of work to do. I think that's it. Yeah, that is it.
On the flip side of that, have any of those that graduated went on to college or anything like that?
Yes. For ICA, most of our students do go on to college. Last year, we had, I think it was four of nine go on to college. In Empower Ed, we had three, I think, that have enrolled in school. Right now, we have, we have at least five that have applied to Mount Watch, Houston, or Fitchburg State.
Other questions?
Said one. I don't know if you happen to know your graduation date yet for this year.
Yes. I do. It's Thursday. I believe it's May 28th, but I, there may be a little, I may have to change the date. The senior class advisor, the, the person who's in charge of that class, is graduating with his doctorate at Harvard, and he just found out that graduation is that same day. So that's a tentative date for now, but as of now, that's where it stands.
Thank you.
Let us know sooner rather than later so that we can make plans to attend.
Absolutely. I'll let you know as soon as possible. We also do exhibitions. Some of you are aware of what that is, and our second trimester exhibitions are in two weeks. Be there. Mr. Ron?
Yes, the, the four students. Or can they take classes online off themselves?
To get their GEDs. In order to get their GED, they would need to, what I do is I give them information about the GD, GED Preparation Program at Mount Watch Houston Community College. And sometimes I'll even call there and make an appointment for them. And then it's up to them to show up and actually engage in that. The student that I mentioned, who is coming back, went that route and was not successful. So he showed up at the school a couple of weeks ago and said, hey, Mr. Vancilet, I think I want to come back. This isn't working for me, so.
How many, I, I can't help myself. How many times do they get? Take the GED. I'm notorious for. I've sometime taken, I've sometime taken class or exams and flunked them on purpose to see how many times I can take them. Just.
Well, you and I are opposites. I just want to get out of there. Whatever it takes, I just want to get through this. I want to do it once.
I have a very little mind, you know, and I can't help myself.
It's okay. I'm just saying, we're, we're polar opposites.
I think around the most of the folks, we're, they're gearing towards graduating from Lemmonster High School as opposed to getting a GED.
And I think expose them to other things that might, if somebody doesn't have a specific, I know your goals are your goals. At least 80% of the seniors get to graduation, that's your goal. But the goal of a student, you know, when you ask them, sometimes have a conversation with a 17 and a half-year-old, they're not sure what they want to do. In that program, we're exposing them to as many things as possible, interacting, bringing them, interacting socially. And so sometimes it takes time to figure out just what you want to do, right? I mean, and so the backbone of the system is here to sort of support that. And, and again, I think, Ron, at some point, you know, maybe in their life, you've got two young ladies, I assume that have children that, you know, right now, they're, sure they're busy, but they kind of circle back and say, you know what, my, things have changed, gets a little older, I want to get my GED or come back to the program or whatever it might, how, how, what's the age for timing out on this? There's no real age for timing out. I mean, 22 is the oldest they can be. Right. So, Ron, they have till 22 to make use of, of these programs, so.
They can't take it, they can't take it, they, they, they can't, they can't take it online.
The GED? I don't know. I, I think they need to actually go to a testing site. I don't think they have an online, solely online option for GED, but I'm not sure. That's something I'd have to look into.
GED, I think, is protected, so you'd have to be.
Right. They want to make sure you're doing it.
There you go.
Just asking, that's all.
Yeah. No, good point, good answer, and good job. I, I suspect that the new facility and the new school has really helped a lot. I mean. Absolutely, yes. Bouncing around a little bit, and I think at the end of, you know, last, into the past year, you know, it, it, the program was where the superintendent at the time thought it should be, and we were ready for that next step. Yep. So I'm happy to see that everything's working out well down there. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Alright, while I wait. Hi, I'm Stephanie. I am with Lemmonster Academy, so the online school, so I'll talk to you a little bit about that and answer any questions you might have. Just gonna try to go back to slide one here. Sorry about that. Alright. So kind of the nuts and bolts. So at, are they working? Yeah. So at Lemmonster Academy, we are one of seven single virtual school districts in the entire state. So while we do have outside resources that we talk with and collaborate with and meet with these other virtual schools, a lot of it is just done internally. And because of that, my staff and I, we sort of came up with a framework that we follow, and we're thinking about building and developing the school. So we always think about balancing that culture of achievement, you know, the ability for all students to learn at a high level. We focus on that we are an alternative pathway for student success, so we are very flexible in our thinking. And we are trying to capitalize on giving students modern digital learning experiences because we are totally online. So we always keep those three core tenants in the back of our mind as we are thinking about Lemmonster Academy. Our mission statement, I guess I'll just read it to you. I'm going to read it to you from here, though, because I can't really see. So Lemmonster Academy provides a rigorous, flexible, and personalized curriculum through digital learning tools. We align real-world opportunities with personalized learning to prepare students for success in college, career, and citizenship while expanding educational pathways within the Lemmonster Public Schools. That's just verbatim our mission statement. Our student body, so our students include those that are working full or part-time. I have some students that work up to 80 or 90 hours a week while pursuing their education. I have students that are parents to their own children or caretakers of other people in their lives, so it's their responsibility. I have students who have re-engaged in education after stepping away for whatever reason. They've decided to come back. And then I just have students, they just require a different pathway to achieve success, and Lemmonster Academy is able to offer that to them. And we at our core, we really believe that if we are able to personalize and support these children in a virtual environment, we can help them achieve their academic goals while they're balancing these real-life individual responsibilities. It's over here. Am I clicking the wrong place? Following the directions, but alright. So our date today, so our students, they log on. A lot of their coursework is done in edgenuity. Some of it is done outside of edgenuity. They have a live check-in every single day via Google Meet with a teacher. So there's a live person on the other end. There's an interaction, kind of a check-in. At that point, students can go ahead and book like tutoring hours or extra support, whatever they need. And a lot of times, teachers are just checking on their wellbeing. Our students are able to book in-person or virtual tutoring with a core content teacher, so they can pick a core content, book it with that teacher. They can book time with a sped teacher, a tutor, a guidance counselor, or an adjustment counselor. So we offer many of the same services that a traditional school will offer. Students can come to Lemmonster Academy anytime that it is opened and staffed, and we made it, it's just like a live drop-in, so you don't have to pre-plan it. So at any given time, we might have four or five kids in the building unplanned. And then students and guardians receive weekly progress reports of their student achievement within Lemmonster Academy, and I think that's kind of what sets us apart a little bit. So they get weekly grades, progress, attendance, and suggestions, and commendations. There we go. Alright, our school improvement plan. We have five goals. I'm just going to talk to you about three of them kind of quickly here. So our learning goal number one here is to provide students with diverse, flexible learning modes through robust digital learning opportunities that meet their individual needs. So we've already adopted edgenuity, so a state-approved, high-quality instructional material for online learning. We've totally adopted Google Classroom. We thought about other platforms, but we're a Google Districts. We just stuck with it. And we've been experimenting with various ed tech tools. And what we're working on, so one thing we're super excited about, we're creating asynchronous courses via Google Classroom, so kids can get off of edgenuity and take a course sort of at their own pace. Part of this came out of our school council work and a suggestion by them. Some of it came out of, oh, we have the civics project, and that's not on edgenuity, so how can we build and adapt? We are adopting and integrating ed tech tools such as NearPod and Perdeck, and we're creating partnerships with local colleges for access to virtual courses. So some of our kids are at virtual college courses while enrolled at Lemmonster Academy. Goal two, we want students to take ownership of their education, so by setting goals and creating individualized learning paths. If you were to look at the backend of our schedule, we offer, I think it's close to 72 courses, and sometimes it's only one child enrolled in that course, so children can really pick what they want with what's available. We give them an assigned check-in with an assigned teacher. I'm not going to call it an advisor, but it's sort of like an advisor. These teachers, they get assigned a caseload of kids, and that is their primary point of contact for their time in Lemmonster Academy, so they're able to really build those relationships. We give targeted support via tutoring, and then we schedule based, obviously, on district requirements and graduation requirements, but students can go in and make sort of those individual decisions as well. What we're working on are quarterly goal settings with students, so they are working on that now. They go in, they fill out sort of what their goals are. A regular check-ins with our guidance counselors that get more frequent as students get older, when they're thinking about post-secondary. And we're creating more opportunities for students to share their goals via Google Forms and other platforms. And then the last goal I'll talk to you, this is our SEL goal. This is the most challenging one for us at Lemmonster Academy because we don't have students in front of us, right? So they are virtual, they're at home. We see some of them. We don't see all of them. Some kids, I'll meet once in person before they graduate. So what we've done, we've held some social events, so students came into the building. We just had like a gaming event recently where kids played like board games. We had video games and tabletop games like ping pong, so a handful of kids came in to have those interactions. We discuss internal strategies with our support staff, like our guidance and adjustment counselors, and we're creating those digital self-assessments for students to share how they're failing, feeling. And then what we're working on with the goal setting, we want to add a reflection piece for students. And we're looking at developing a course or adopting some sort of curriculum that can help cover those SEL components, such as mental health. Because at Lemmonster Academy, even though they're distant, we still want to educate the whole child, and SEL is really important. Any questions about any of those goals? Let's keep going here. Alright. So our students, our updates here. So they're enrolled in college-level courses, honors courses, AP courses, courses at the Mount, and then work-study opportunities. So we're able to leverage, like I said, a lot of my students work, so we're able to leverage them working and translating them into credits via different projects and just tracking, which is awesome for them. Our social events and field trips. So we had, we did a vision board event. Great turnout to that. So students did personal vision boards and academic vision boards. We did that gaming event I talked about. We had a nice little cookie decorating thing. We did a field trip to the American Heritage Museum, and right now, we're planning a trip to the Woo Sox, and two more social events are being planned for the students to come in and get together. Alright, our school council updates. So school council, our big goal was to work on a variety of ways to check in with students around SEL. So we are doing Google Forms and discussion boards, and students are giving sort of, I, I, very honest answers, actually, on these Google Forms and these discussion boards with how things are going, how they're feeling. And then, right, like I talked about earlier, we are considering a course for next school year around mental health issues or SEL. And then our school council, we are also looking at more opportunities to expand partnerships with other colleges outside of the Mount. And then our community partnerships. So we do a lot of initiatives around attendance or academics or just individual sort of student needs, so shout out to like Five Guys, Texas Roadhouse, Funky Phoenix Bikes, and the Boston Bruins, who have all given us things to give to our students. And our success stories. Almost done here. Alright. We are at approximately 50 students. We're actually at 52 students now. We have a rolling admission, so the numbers change. Four of our students are currently or close to being eligible for early graduation, so two of them are seniors that are going to be done in like three weeks. The other two are juniors that are probably going to be totally done with high school by the end of the school year. So some kids come to Lemmonster Academy for that reason. And then finally, the success story. So I talked a little bit about those SEL check-in prompts, but recently, our last prompt was, how are you feeling about your progress at Lemmonster Academy this week? Tell us why. And I didn't edit these answers for grammar or anything. They just are how they are. One child responded, I'm feeling good because I'm caught up with my classes. I'm feeling, because I can graduate in May with all my friends at Lemmonster High. I never thought this would happen. Or, I just started here at Lemmonster Academy, but I'm really liking it, and the work is flowing very nicely for me. And finally, I'm feeling good about graduation because I've always thought I was never going to graduate, but now we're three months away. So those are some real student responses.
So the students that are really accelerating here, are they also taking college courses? There's a lot of colleges that give free courses.
Yeah.
Is that parallel to, to all this?
Um, yeah, we mostly, I have kids taking courses at the Mount and at Fitchburg State right now. One of them was looking at like some school in Chicago and looking at some of the free courses there, so I talked to him about that.
Is this open specifically to Lemmonster students or where it's online? Is there a choice feature for enrollment?
Yeah, so DESI doesn't allow single virtual school districts to have school choice, so it is only for Lemmonster students.
Then you have 54?
52, 52.
That's, that's, that's quite. And that's something they opted to do.
Yeah, so I don't like recruit or anything. In fact, you can ask people that have seen me do my intakes. I make it seem like, are you sure you want to do this? And they still go forward with it, so I don't sell it like or anything.
I mean, you, you really have to be that kind of, be able to focus and be that kind of. I mean, you really have to be that kind of, be able to focus and be that kind of learner. I know that some students or families have told me their kids are just, through COVID, did amazing.
Yep.
And then others said, wasn't gonna work for them.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's good to have the option. Questions? Ron and then Josh?
Yeah. Yeah, so Fitchburg State is one of them, so the Mount was able to offer virtual courses for the students. So we're looking at how Fitchburg State can also offer virtual students for our kids to take college courses with them. So the virtual component's like very, it's necessary for the school, because the kids aren't gonna go there in person. So that's one example. Um, no, so those are the local ones we've reached out to and it's only because I've talked to the high school sort of about what they're doing and who they reach out to, but. I mean, I got a whole master's degree online, so I know that colleges are offering lots of these things. So we're looking at reaching out to more to see what we can do.
I had a few questions.
Yeah.
Can students who just need one class enroll in one class with the academy? Or is it all or nothing?
No, but it's not all or nothing, in fact, if you want to get into the real logistics here, we give them about half of their courses for the first half of the year, so they do a full. Year course and a half a year, and then we give them the other half to second half of the year. And it's only because we feel like if a kid logs online or whatever and sees nine courses, like it's like, I'm not gonna be able to do that. So we make it for them, so I have one kid that's only enrolled in one course right now and it's because it's all they need.
So I guess in the sense of, if there's a high school student that comes to the high school, but also has, needs a class that's not being offered at this, whatever time.
Yeah.
Can they enroll in an online course with you?
They can at the high school, I think there's options at the high school, you can't be in LHS and Lemonster Academy, it's just not allowed, yeah.
I have a kid in that situation, I feel like this would be a better option.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because it's a little bit more self-directed at the high school and I think that's where the drop-off is.
Yeah, yep, probably.
Second question, do you collaborate with LCE for students that maybe this would be a good fit for and maybe vice versa?
Yeah, so especially John's Empower Ed program. If kids aren't finding success in there, sometimes we'll have them over at Lemonster Academy to see if there's more success. We've seen that happen and vice versa. Occasionally I'll get kids to say, you know what, I really need like social interaction, but I don't want to go to the big group and we'll send them over to John. So we're able to do that and that's been good.
So Ron, I think that speaks to your question about the GED, right? Well, good question, and this, this program could support the people who might fall out of the, and vice versa, right?
Yeah, we do it a lot, so yeah, John's taken one of my kids who was, was not greatly successful online and now they're doing much better in person. And I have a couple of his kids that are doing better online, so, yeah.
And lastly, I finished my bachelor's degree online at UMass Amherst, University Without Walls.
Yeah.
And I know that they collaborate with some other schools, so that might be a good lead.
Perfect, I'm gonna make a note of that, I'm gonna text it to myself though, because otherwise I'll forget, so, give me one sec. What is it called, the university?
University Without Walls.
Excellent. Hi.
That's LHS.
That's LHS, yeah. I don't know what those stats are, if I could see them, I could tell you.
Yeah.
Let me take a look.
Yeah. I'm just wondering. Demographics, right, yeah.
I would say the like students with disabilities and the L demographics are pretty similar, if you take my numbers and scale them down. The race demographics aren't quite as similar, at least yet anyways.
What kind of work studies are they doing right now, like what are, what like?
Yeah, so I have one, like a lot of them are in the construction field, so there's one kid that's like doing roofs and stuff like that and he probably makes more than anybody in this room, because he hands me a case stuffs. I have kids working at salons, I actually have four girls who are like, I don't know what it's called, but they're getting like their salon degree while they're finishing at, yeah, thank you. While they're finishing at Lemonster Academy as well. Yeah, so there's that and some kids have been offered full-time jobs, which is great. A lot of trades or just like, I have a handful of kids that work at like dunks.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Questions, that's it?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I promised Ms. Silverman that I would be quick, so she's gonna glare at me if I, if I go too long. Well, I'll give you a quick. Kyle gets the slides up, the girls were winning at the half, up by five, they're at Dartmouth tonight and tomorrow the boys are playing at. What is it, Somerset, Somerset Berkeley? It's a late game, like eight, eight-thirty I wanna say.
Playing there right here.
Playing there, yeah, it's all neutral site now.
It's a hall.
It is a hall. So and then the girls hockey did lose on Sunday, they had a really nice run this year. Alright, here's LHS, I did put a lot of pictures in there, so if you get bored with what I'm saying, you can focus on the pictures. First of all, who are we? There's about ten-fifty to ten-sixty students at the high school, I think it's ten-sixty actually today. Our enrollment, this, I gave seven years, because that's kind of like before me and before my predecessor, it was also the notes that I already had, so it was easy to do. We've changed a lot, we've become more diverse over that time, we have a lot more students who are learning English, whose, whose primary language at home is not English. We have a lot more students with disabilities and we have a dramatic increase in our students who are low income. That number's about double and it's been hovering around fifty percent between forty-eight and fifty-two for the last four years. And what that kind of means is that we need to be more thoughtful about the supports that we provide for students. We need to ensure that our students have equitable access to an education regardless of what they're bringing and what that kind of means in practice is. A lot more services that, or a lot more approaches that. Build off of where students are right now, or a lot more things that let them show their learning through ways besides just writing a paper or do it, taking a quiz. A lot of project-based learning and things like that. But it's an interesting place to work, my Portuguese is getting better, my French is pretty good. I had to do Portuguese this morning, this little thingy's not working, I had to use Portuguese this. Uh-oh, Steve, you might have to jump in. I did something. I promise I'm really good at technology. That's the next one. Alright, thank you though, I appreciate that word about my Portuguese, it's been, it's been a progress, it's been progress.
How would you know, do you understand Portuguese? You got them all fooled.
Mr. Mayor, the, the first week of school, the first week of school, I did the Portuguese announcements, I went down to a class of English learners and I, and I said, how are my announcements, how was my Portuguese? And students from Brazil said, I didn't know you were speaking Portuguese. They know, I'm not fooling them. Alright, in terms of MCAS scores, as Robin said, like it's changed, like I know that they don't, they don't count as your graduation requirement anymore, but there's still a good measure to see how our students stack up against a known standard. Ultimately, our, our white students who are native speakers of English and non-students with disability, those scores are going up. Our subgroups are where we're, we're suffering in that gap, they're going up, but their gap is not as progressing at the same rate as. White students who aren't disabled and, or who don't have students, who are not with disabilities and don't have, what's that? I guess you could say that, yeah. That's where our gap kind of is, and if you go on to biology on the next slide, Steve, the, those scores have improved. We do have a new curriculum this year that we're working on. You know, we will still be rated by the state for our participation and as a school, our school report card is still going to be based on MCAS scores. So while it's not a graduation requirement, we are desperately begging kids to still do their best on it. Uh, next slide. Access testing, this is the testing that's given to students who are learning English. Our overall score on that kind of scale of like one to, it's really one to six, but one to four, which is what we basically test, is a two-point-nine. And just to put that number into perspective, that is. Three is the point where a student goes from having two periods of English language instruction down to one and then a period of English language arts instruction. So we average two-point-nine, students exit from English language instruction when they reach a four-point-two. And a, well, it's more complex than that, but it's basically a four-point-two. And at that point, a student would be expected to be able to do fine in any academic class in high school with minimal supports and help. In terms of their ability to be fluent in English. Number that's not up there is that seven percent of our students, that's eleven of our L students, did test out of English language instruction last year. Another twenty exited because they had been in ESL for six years. Most of those kids though are in like the high-three range, so they're not leaving there and not, and still struggling with English. They just never achieved that four-point-two that they needed, but they're essentially, they're very proficient in English. To kind of meet these students and improve that rate, there's a couple of things that we're working on for next year, one's a newcomer academy. It'll be for students who are in the United States for less than a year and at the ESL one level. And then actually Robin and I were today talking about some summer English language development programming that we can do. To help students who have made some gains to maintain those gains and continue to move forward in that. Alright, so our school improvement plan, three areas that I'll focus on, one is the culture of achievement and what that really just means is what is good teaching? The second one is school culture, what do we do to make the school safe and make it a welcome place for students? And then attendance, what do we do to get students into the school? And I'll talk about each one of those in some detail. In terms of culture of achievement, just a couple of things that we've really worked on. PLCs, professional learning communities have been a big part of the work that we've done this last year. They're basically common planning sessions for teachers, but they're structured, they're organized, so it's not just teachers talking about the Red Sox, it's teachers talking about instruction and students. We have thirteen different PLCs that represent different core courses, so every teacher who teaches ELA nine has a common planning period together. And then once in every seven school days, we meet as a group to do some planned work around student achievement. And they're, you know, they're the primary MCAS subjects along with chemistry and US history and world history and art and ESL. A common thing that they do is data cycles where they will give an assessment to students, so maybe on student writing or solving quadratics. Every teacher will give the same assessment, will look at how students performed on that, will identify gaps and then will identify what we can do to improve those gaps. A big part of this year's work has been trying to make those more teacher-led. So instead of me having to go to them, because it is kind of exhausting, like I run one, two, three, four, five, six. I run seven of them myself and it's a lot, so they creep up on me every day and every day I have to like, oh, I'd never planned a geometry one for tomorrow, so. It's a lot, but the teachers have been taking the lead on those and it's been, it's been really great. Another thing that we do a lot are learning walks, they're also called instructional rounds and it's where a group of teachers will visit a series of classrooms. And we're looking for something, some specific aspects of instruction, so maybe the types of questions that teachers use or the. The types of, the rigor of activities that they're doing or how they're building on what students already learn. We actually have one coming up Wednesday afternoon. And those have been fantastic, they identify areas where we can improve in our instruction and then we plan those into our PD. So those have been fantastic things. If you go on to the next one, Steve, what those basically do, the, these are some of the areas that we focus on from learning walks. These are things that we identified as things that we want to do better at. And we've worked on, you know, we've measured them in learning walks and then we've done some TDs to improve them. I think that this is a practice that's really gone well across the district, doing these learning walks. Alright, somebody, I will be honest, I am somewhat colorblind, don't tell the army. Somebody told me that this color scheme on this slide was awful, but after I'd already sent it in, so I apologize. These are the safety upgrades that we have made over the last few years. This year, in particular, what you might have noticed was the restructuring of the LHS front entrance, so that it is now like a double. Security, you can come in, you get buzzed into the first of the foyer and the next door is locked as well. And there's a secretary now who can talk to the person and if you're just dropping off sneakers or lunch, you can just drop it right there, you don't need to go any further into the school. And it just kind of prevents as many people coming into the school because you just never know. But there's been a lot of improvements over the last couple of years and that's really been a great focus of the district between, you know, Rick Bergeron and Butch and Bill and their team and what they've done with us. So I do think LHS is much safer than it maybe had been in the past. And then the other piece of culture, if you go on, Steve. I really want to make sure that every student can find something at LHS that they enjoy doing, so that there's a reason that they go there. They might not love history class, they might not love chemistry class, but you know, they really love being in the jazz band or they really love being on the dance team. And you know, if you can find those things, it's a way to get kids to come to school and it makes them. Give them something to love at LHS, so it's not all just sort of the slog, so these are a bunch of the clubs that we have. The next one's the athletic teams that we have. And you know, I'll tell you, the next one's arts, the arts programs and Ren tonight only shared like what the art programs have done the last two weeks. If you, I had saved a bunch of other things that they had done in the last month, they had their concert in the round, they had, they were at the Rose Bowl Parade a couple of weeks before that. There was another ignition event that they did a couple of weeks ago, so like when, you know, if there's a month between meetings, some of the, there's so many things for the arts that I end up throwing a few away, because otherwise Ren would be talking longer than I am tonight. But there's a lot of focus on things that, that we can have kids do that, that makes LHS the place they want to be. And the next slide. Not to brag, please follow the district's Instagram, but like I already have a thousand followers on the LHS Instagram, so if you want to see. Pictures, I post the pictures of the fun stuff that we do, please follow us there. We also, I also do a weekly newsletter, it's also on the school website and then I'm adding, there's a, there's a tab on there for course selection. And next, in the next another week or so, I'll put one on there for all the graduation stuff, so everything, like I really try to make the website something that is helpful for, for families to use. And then the next slide, we do have some academic cultural things too that we try to do, so just some examples here. Street and Practical Law Speaker Series and the Women of Color Speaker Series, which is actually student-run. Those are some fantastic programs that we do. And finally attendance, so our target is ninety-five percent, we are not hitting it, but we're getting better. The last, I do post this every, every week, I put in like what's gone on the last ten days for attendance, trying to get parents to get their, their kid out of school more often. The seniors had a bad time the last ten days, they, they have been in the nineties, they just, this last one was kind of rough. We've added an attendance monitor who's been doing a lot more outreach to families, so home visits, meetings with families, just trying to get to the cause, like why their, their child isn't coming in. And helping parents to get tools if their student is having a hard time coming to school, give them some tools to help them to get their child to school more. And then finally, stuff that's coming up, this is course selection season, so students are gonna be entering their courses by Friday. From there, I have to take all of that and do the massive Tetris game to, to, for the eight hundred or so courses that run at LHS every year. We do have MCAS, it's March twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. The yearbook deadline is the end of the month, so please order your yearbooks. Junior prom is coming up really, really soon, it feels like it shouldn't be, but it's April fifth, so it's a month away for the junior prom. And the senior prom is in May, so there's a little more time for that, but there is a parent guarding and sign-off that we ask parents to do that, just that they understand the host laws and, and really what they should and shouldn't do to support their, their students. And then finally, you know, we have a new track coming in, again, Butch and Bill, doing great work out there. Just stop having the trees knock down the power lines will be great, but we finally have that new track coming in out back that. You know, has been in the planning for, for quite, quite a few years. And that's what's going on at LHS. Sort of the tip of the iceberg, Ren, wouldn't you say?
Just really quick, that attendance number, that's not your chronic absentee, that's just kind of fluctuation.
That's the percentage of students that attended school, so we're, you know, we're in the nineties, so like our, our chronic absence rate, I don't think I put in there. And honestly, I can't think of it off the top of my head.
But when you think of like all the, like eighty percent.
This is a tough time, yeah, I had the flu last week too, so like, you know, it is a tough time of year, seniors had a tough time. It does, unfortunately, it doesn't get better as you get closer to the, to graduation for seniors, but they're typically over ninety, so. Yeah, I mean, it's not a unique problem, attendance isn't a huge problem at Lemonster. It's not getting better at, at the rate that I was hoping it would. You know, having Tim Sheridan on there has really helped and you know. It, it's a challenge, it really is, and, and there is a lot of stuff going around, there really is, so. it, it's a challenge. It really is. And, and there is a lot of stuff going around. There really is, so. Oh, the numbers of students? I will ask the teachers who, the advisors for these to send me numbers, like, what do you, like, what are they typically bringing in? And I know it can fluctuate a little bit, like, one week the game club will have 10 and another week it'll have 20, but, you know, I'll ask. Of course.
I know Ren had her hand up.
Yes, Ryan, sorry.
Ren?
I kind of just want to talk a little bit about like the MCAS scores and whatnot, because I think just speaking as a student and knowing a lot of other students, especially things like, um, math and bio, I think a big problem contributing to it is not the curriculum, but more so the fact that like a lot of classes are jam-packed. And I know that's not an easy issue to solve. It's not like, oh, let's just hire more teachers. Of course, I'll like be charitable to you as like an administrator, because I'm sure it's really hard to find.
I appreciate that, Ren.
But I think like, yeah, because our classes have so many students, we have amazing teachers at LHS, but they, it's definitely overwhelming to have to teach that many kids at once. Um, and I think that does contribute to a lot of our declining scores.
Yeah, it would be very hard to add a lot of new teachers to LHS, though, just because of space, you know? I mean, I, um, I, I made these insane plans to make it so that I didn't have teachers who were roaming all day long. They're, they're kind of sharing rooms. It, it almost broke me trying to make the schedule to do that, but it worked. But we don't have, you know, we're bursting at the seams as far as space. So if I wanted, you know, even if I wanted to add, you know, five more math teachers, I don't have any place to put them. So they'd be teaching in a tent in the courtyard, so.
All right, Ron, go ahead.
You're not going to ask it in French, though, are you? There is not, but I do have a proposal for a pickleball club. So that, I think, I don't know, because I think the courts that they were looking at were outdoors. So the big challenge was going to be transporting them there, because the court wasn't on, I don't remember where the court was going to be. Where are their courts in Lemonster?
Doyle Field.
So it must have been at Doyle Field. Right.
Pickleball. And then there's indoor ones, uh, behind 435.
Yep, I do have a proposal for a pickleball club.
I want to be the coach of it, that's why I just.
And then and her sister, they convinced me to hook up pickleball.
You got video of that?
And so.
It's like America's fastest-growing sport.
Pickleball started because they had, they were playing ping pong ball. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm very, very awkward. I hit things. I usually break them. But, you know.
Question, Ron, is did you play real street hockey on French show? Not deck hockey, street hockey.
No, no, I, I, well, I didn't, I, I, my brother, I just, I played, I just played football. And we played, well, street hockey.
Street hockey.
With a, with a, with a stick.
That's street.
And no, no, no skates.
That's the real.
And we're on the ice, and, and I broke my brother-in-law's jaw by axe.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, and I'll keep you up.
We're going to move on to, um, if, if you haven't heard enough planning tonight, we're going to move now on to the approval of the 2026.
I just have a question.
Group calendar.
Do we know, like, I know this year we had to change graduation dates because of MCAS. Do we know if there's going to be any issues next year with changing this graduation date?
You're worried about next year?
Calendar, that's asking.
Uh, the second.
Right.
Well, I know we had to vote on it to bring it earlier.
We should go back to the regular schedule next night.
Yeah, we have to go back to the first Saturday.
All right, we have a motion.
Motion open.
All right, and second by Eileen, all in favor of those opposed, thank you. We're going to move on to the minutes, February 3rd, 2025. Do we have a motion to approve the minute?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Eileen mixed the motions, second by Sandra. Are there any questions or comments, errors, omissions? If not, all in favor, signify in the usual manner, those opposed. We'll now go to policy subcommittee meeting. Do we have anything to report?
No, we have not met yet.
Okay, finance, uh, he asked to, uh, to delay it until next meeting. Now we have action, that is first reading on the policy for J, J I B, inter last, inter.
And so we're going to vote on this because we did not have a subcommittee meeting to address it.
Obsolete equipment. Everybody's had a chance, I'm sure, to see these pictures of very obsolete.
Yeah, we didn't even know, understand what that is.
I thought they were helmets from the Three Stooges.
Like, what is this?
1942 football. It can be whatever you want, but we have to declare it surplus. Motion, a second to declare whatever this stuff is. Okay, all in favor, those opposed, throw it out, recycle it. Now we're going to be talking about the approval of the two field trips. Where are we going?
Nature's classroom. Excuse me, uh, for the Skyview Middle School and then Lemonster High School. Student Council is requesting to go to the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils, a state conference. I make a motion to approve both of them, wonderful opportunities.
Second by Sandra, all in favor, those opposed. Prove of the warrants, do we?
We have a donation.
Oh, do we do a donation?
Donation for JA School Committee approval. The Boston Bruins Foundation.
Where is that?
The supporting is in there, but it's.
It's not on the action.
No.
It's in here.
All right, want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the donation for JA's, uh, Bruins from the Bruin, Boston Bruins Foundation.
Somebody want to second it?
I'll second it.
All right, Ron, you get this one. All in favor for the donation? Thank you for the donation. How about a warrant, uh, uh, approval of the warrants? Are we doing them? Wow, you're really piling those babies up. And we spend zillions next time. And we're going to have to explain that we haven't approved them in a while. All right, new role business? Do we have new role business? Yes, yes. Oh, my goodness. Say it ain't so.
I attended this, another one coming up next week, so I thought it would be, um, good for your perusal to just take a look at what LHS CTEI, uh, ratings and some of the issues that they're addressing. Coming back. Also, I attended a cap's budget meeting, zoom, and then also on the same sheet on the office side, little meeting of Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and it was talking about the Student Opportunity Act and funding, forthcoming year and what they're anticipating. So I just thought that I would take units on that and share with you.
So what are they anticipating on the school?
Well, um, the Fed's not going to be bouncing like this for a while. Probably not over, that's what the financial officer said. And.
Well, they don't want to pass it till October anyway. The state didn't pass this. We're working on Nixius budget.
I don't want to cut you off, are you done? I was just thinking after Mr. Roderquins was speaking, and, um, do we have anything that we offer for, um, maybe other former students who would have graduated but entered the war or anything like?
We've done them in the past.
I'm wondering if it's something someone could reach out to the veterans and maybe do something at graduation, have honor some.
Yeah, we've done them, you know. By request, some people are just.
Some people might not know, so maybe it's something.
They can promote it.
Yeah.
Definitely. Any, anything on the new role business? I, uh, just one other thing.
We do have one thing after you're done.
No, you go first.
Okay, um, I just want to, uh, check in, uh, we should have, uh, done sort of a mid-year evaluation on the superintendent, which we have been neglectful in doing. So we do need to, um, do that. And then obviously, the end of the year evaluation will be coming right behind that. So I just wanted to, uh, put that on people's agenda, and I think on our committee is Melissa, me, and there was one other person.
Wasn't with us. Oh, we didn't change it.
Didn't change it. So the three of us need to like kind of get together and just get some feedback. Yeah, we can do that after.
We did, we had.
We had a form, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you, Chris. Right, I think, you know, it's sort of what's in her, uh, the superintendent's contract. So we, I would have to take a look at that, to be honest with you. Your goals are, yes. Yeah, usually, um, what happens for the end of the year, you would provide us with, um, a written, uh, explanation of where you are at with those goals and what's been accomplished and what still needs to be accomplished, because some of them are longer-term, you know, goals, not attainable in one year.
And, and so mine isn't anything we have to discuss in it, but maybe something sort of future. That is to talk about sort of artificial intelligence, what we already do, what we might want to offer, the ethics of, I mean, it's just like anything else. You know, social media came out, there's a lot of good things about it, and then there's always that flip side of the bad side. Internet came, it was the flip side of it. So no matter what you do in life, there's going to be a flip side. Or I beat nice game every day.
You know, we have, we, we, we have teachers that teach, but what do you do if all of a sudden they want to use Alexa as a teacher?
I, I don't know.
If Alexa's the teacher, Alexa can do no wrong.
I don't know if it's a teacher, but more of a tool. And, and I remember the first plastic show that I went to was 32 years ago, and I walked in, it was a guy from Japan that had a machine that was robotic, all automated. And everybody said, they're just going to put everybody out of business. 32 years later, we don't have enough people to operate the very robotic machines that they were showing at that show then. So it's retraining, it's why education is so important, it's constant re, retraining. And, um, I mean, is it gonna, I, I think we use it as a tool for our students, but first we've got to understand it, right? I mean, we've got to, so I don't know what.
Thing is, the, you're saying we have to understand, the problem you have to understand is we don't have to understand it, because even Alexa doesn't understand it. We're not, our minds don't understand.
Well, I understand the concept of it, understanding, you know, technology, and I get where it's going. It's going to go with or without us. So.
Exactly.
It's our, you know, it's, uh, do, you know, what's our curriculum? We don't have to talk about it. We can put on another agenda.
So sorry. So, um, thank you for bringing it up. Stephanie Potito, who is here, um, and is our part-time, um, uh, Lemonster Academy Director, also, um, is our technology, uh, professional developer for the district. And she actually has put together a lot of training materials for our teachers that address just this. So I was going to ask her to do a presentation to the school committee around what we are currently doing. So we are doing a lot of work, teaching our teachers how to use it, uh, to help, uh, support their teaching practices, not in, as a substitute for. And then also, what is appropriate or how it is appropriate for our students to utilize it? Because our students should be able to utilize AI, but, uh, not plagiarize using AI. And so that's a big, um, piece.
Isn't, well, no, there's an AI site, there's a site for that. You can run the report. It will tell you in a minute whether it is. Anybody that's had surgery or is involved in the medical world knows everything today is robot-assisted. What does that mean? It's pretty much sure that the robots do most of the work. And the, and event, and that is just going to keep, you know, that's just, that's just more of the world, future of the world, so.
Have to look at the movie 2001 Space Odyssey.
I was thinking.
I was going to say, or read George Orwell's 1984.
Coin. We got something for everything. That would go back to the movies. People flood the theaters. Right. Yeah.
You said it's very obvious, but I do expect that as the college gets better, it might not pop so often.
Well, I think also you have to know your students.
Yeah, because when you're looking at materials, it looks like they're written by a college senior. You know, you're talking about freshmen.
But there's a button for that. Tone it down. There is, there's a button.
Nice, Karen. Big mistakes.
Yes, yes.
Right, it's cool, but also we want to talk about, I guess, students being replaced with technology. That's what a lot of online curriculums already do, like things like Adroline, for example. Um, a lot of teachers have complained about how they feel like they're a substitute in their own class. So it's not that artificial intelligence that's using it. It's entirely about how it's being used, you sense to how much it's being implemented. And I think a lot of it requires really listening to teachers and how they're feeling about, I guess, current curriculums and curriculums that the school committee is like considering adopting.
Yeah, no, absolutely. But understand, this thing's going with or without us. When you see them, Bill is spending billions and building, you know, dedicating chips and warehouses and power sources, this train's leaving. We're either on it or we're not. It's like the medical device business or, um, any of the health-related, you know, businesses, any of the technol, you're either with it, you know, you had to prepare our students for it, teach them the ethics of it, they figure out how to apply it, or you get left, you get left out. I mean.
Pennsylvania just opened up a nuclear power plant again, the power, for the power for the AI system.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, you got to, these things use a lot. I mean, at, at one point, we were one of the few comprehensive trade schools around that wanted to be a comprehensive trade school. Other schools couldn't fill because nobody was interested in being a plumber or anything. They had no interest in the trades. Everybody was going to college. We stuck it, we held up, we stuck in there, we stuck it out. And now we have a excellent program that everyone is pretty much copied. So that's why I say the train's, it's going to come, it'll stop, it'll leave with or without us. So, yes, but those are all things that you got to take into, I look at it as really a tool to say, look, there's a lot out there in the world. I'm going to help you guide, I'm going to help you to get, you know, through those windows and that opportunity to sort of explore the world in, in ways that you could never have envisioned. Yes. All right, so we'll put on the next agenda.
Can I stay with Ron and talk about pickleball? I'm just joking.
I'm just joking, Ron.